Newport City Special Council meeting is called to order at 5:00 p.m. Present at the meeting are council members President Chrisie Shaw, Councilmember Charbonneau, Councilmember Curtis, Councilmember Alfred Chase, also present are Treasurer James Johnson, our City Manager Jonathan Delabria, anybody online? Hi, in the room we have our Department Head of DPW, Mr. Burnier, anybody else? Oh, there he is, our interim Fire Chief, thank you, listening, anybody else? There she is, I'm fortunate, I apologize, and Mr. Terry and Stacy, thank you for being Addition, additions to the agenda, President Rashawn?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
Thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilman Alfred Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer? Next item on the agenda is the setting of the water and sewer rates with an anticipated vote. So at this point, I'm going to recognize to begin our discussion, who would like to take a look at the treasurer? Okay, let's see.
So you can see in your packet that we basically took the numbers that Jim had presented to the council back in February that were based on a five-year average with our expenses taken into consideration and making sure that we raised the appropriate amount of revenue to cover those expenses for the water and sewer fund. Rebecca Tarian then took those numbers and pulled back out the depreciation and added in our principal payments, and that basically looking at that, we had identified that really we just needed to raise the sewer fund, but in conversation with staff, we decided that we also did need to raise the water too, because even though last year there was a surplus, the prior two years were a deficit, that which is why that number was less than the other two that was kind of put in front of you, six percent versus the 26 and eight for the sewer. You know, we all had great discussion here among staff of that this is a stepping stone. We're certainly as a council and staff going to have to revisit this every quarter, and as we start to install more meters, we have roughly half of those water meters installed, but as we get closer, the amount of fixed connections is going to decrease, and so we'll have those, the metered rates that will have most of our connections, which I anticipate we are going to bring in less revenue because we're not billing on a fixed, we're billing per usage. So we'll just have to address that probably for the next three years, three to four years, and just as those connections are made, really keeping track of what that revenue is so that we bring in the appropriate amount of revenue to cover those expenses. So this is what the proposal from staff was, what was provided to you, so 26 percent, eight, and then six percent for both fixed and variable for water. I don't know if Jim or Tom or Stacy, but...
No, I'll just reiterate what Jonathan said, I sent in that option back in February, I think, that it again, I had left the depreciation and she took it out, which removed less of an increase, but otherwise, I think this is just a first step, and we're going to have to look at this again quite often to get back. This one is just designed to try to get us back to where we're even. It may be taking more than one time, but this is the first step in several, I suspect.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you want to ask the treasurer or the city manager? Anything you want to ask the treasurer or the city manager?
I guess I can comment if I can.
Okay, go ahead.
So in addition, what wasn't included in your packet, which I was asked to produce today, was the capital fund for water and sewer, which was left on the table in front of you.
Right, and I do want to get to that as a separate, I just want to hear on the generalization of what we just heard right now, if there are any questions that it's going to be for break even, it's a first stepping stone, and then we'll get further into it. Okay?
No, I can wait, if there's more to be said.
Okay, I just want to be sure that everybody has ample opportunity for this, because this is a big decision.
It's a big jump, yeah. Sorry, my thing is right, we need to start the process and make that first stepping stone happen so we can start to break even soon and then go from there.
Okay, so now, thank you, if you'll run with the, what I asked you to...
Yes.
Together, that would be great.
So I guess there were, there was a couple of questions that Linda had proposed to me today, one was are water and sewer funds a separate fund? And that, that is indeed the case, so if you look at our, our monthly budget that Jim in the treasurer's office provides, our general fund is listed as a leading code of zero, and water and sewer eight and nine, so you can see that those funds are separated into separate enterprise funds that are tracked separately in EMRIC. The second question was about kind of planning, right, and setting our, or looking at our expenses and then setting the revenue appropriately to raise those funds, and that would come out of the town report for your budget that starts July 1st, that the voters approved in March, and that's the budget for the water and sewer for the next fiscal year of '25. In addition to that, we do have a long-range capital improvement plan just for water and sewer. This does go out five years, so you can see here, starting with '23 and '24, what water and sewer projects specifically our DPW director has proposed, and the associated cost with those, with those items. We do this for other things, right, we do it for our paving projects, our police cruisers, our streets, right, so paving sidewalks, and this is a standard, you know, five-year capital plan that gets done every year.
Thank you.
Of course.
Only if you think that you want supervisor, the director to speak, must have been here, but to this...
If he wants to, I mean...
It's up to you, I mean unless we have questions here. Okay, any questions?
Any questions?
Is that the presentation?
Well, right, it's kind of...
All right, so I'll ask my question. I'm not a big fan of the department head's salary coming out as a percent, so my question is what dollar amount is calculated into the water and sewer funds from the treasurer?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
So, Public Works Director Becky Signider, the treasurer, percentage of his salaries are in the water and sewer monies. My question is what dollar amount is calculated into this from the treasurer?
Well, what we do, we add the three salaries together downstairs, okay, and we take eleven and a half, twelve and a half percent of that goes to sewer, and twelve and a half percent goes to water, of the total salaries.
Of the three people?
Of the three people.
And if I could just add to that, and you remember, we are using percentages right now, but the city is working on doing actual, so we're doing those caps, right?
We're doing the sample.
We hold time cards for the entire month of March today, so I'll be analyzing those started tomorrow, but I did, Stacy made me copies, and we pulled time cards out of the vault, and we do have copies of all of March so far.
And what is, what is that, those monies for? What is the purpose?
The purpose of...
The 25 percent, what are you, what are you doing for that?
That is a percentage, I feel that we, the amount of time we spend on water and sewer. Water and sewers are basically a daily operation down there. Probably 90% of the phone calls we get are either taxes or water and sewer, okay? So I figure in my mind that 25% of our salaries are spent strictly doing water business and sewer business.
So is this for answering the phone, sending bills, collecting money, et cetera?
Yeah, anything, anything we do for water and sewer.
Anything, all right. I'm sure a lot of work went into this presentation, and I think everybody that worked on it, but how come we don't have an expense item and an income, and all the things that go with expenses? There's many, many variables. Products, right, I don't know all the products, but you know, between the sewage plant and our sink treatment plant, there must be a lot of products that we buy, you know, I know there's fixed costs, salaries, et cetera, insurance. This is a, to me, this is a very big decision, and I don't see anything where expenses are listed, and what they are. That's just, that's just my opinion.
Well, all the revenue and all the expenditures are listed in the trial balance. The trial balance, you can get any time, I assume they get it every month, the council does. If you look in the back, the water and sewer funds are separated, there's a revenue section and an expense section for each of those.
The expense section is itemized?
Yep.
It's also in the town report as well?
All coded in certain line items.
What about the money owed to us from the prison, does that come into play here at all, or no?
No.
No. And then, we have a contract with an outside firm, $72,000 a year, is that, I just learned that there's a contract, is that in perpetuity, is it for another month?
What's the contract for?
Since the water was, folks.
Lameau?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's contracted because he, Tom can't, he basically oversees the plant because we don't have a licensed operator, is that right?
Well, we do have a licensed operator now, and now we are fully staffed, so that will be coming up as a discussion.
But up until this point, that was, that's what it was for.
Now we've got two staffers, we do have a licensed operator.
Then I think the question is, is it incorporated in here?
Right, and the monies for that in the water and sewer expenses?
That's private budget, evening budget.
It is, that's, that's what I think the question was, not so much as what's going to happen with the contract, but has it been incorporated in these numbers?
And then, products I mentioned, when, when do these products go out to bid?
You're saying projects, like in the...
Products, products, I don't know the products that are needed at the sewer plant or the water plant, but there's products, chemicals.
Yeah.
When do those go out to bid?
Sure.
So we asking specifically, like product A, is it necessary for it to be bid, is it, how is it purchased, are we purchased, what is the purchasing formula we're using? What, is that...
Yeah, so if I, in my business, charge a premium for bricks, and the customer asks me how much are those bricks, and I tell them they're $2, but downtown they're a dollar, the same brick, it's my due diligence to find the most, a good product at a competitive price. My question is, are we doing that? What caught my eye was in the paper last week, either the elementary school or the high school, had an ad in the paper for accepting bids for copy paper, which is, you think, copy paper, but something as simple as that goes out to bid, so I'm wondering when our products go out to bid.
I can answer some of that.
Sure, go ahead.
So I mean, some of it we have contracts with, so for us in the, in the city, copy paper, we buy all stuff at WB Mason, right, because that's who we use for all office supplies.
I think copy paper was important because it was a school.
But, you know, for us, I mean, Tom may have a sole place that he just buys products for, I mean, I think it would be helpful if you do it specific.
Any, any, so if we're buying chlorine?
Okay.
Are there 12 vendors and we're just picking one because we like them, or they've treated the city fair, I just, I don't know the answers.
We're going to be following our purchasing policy, which sets dollar amount thresholds of when we do have to go out to bid and when we don't. That threshold, I believe, is $150,000 where we have to go out to a sealed bid, so I assume that most things that we purchase just require one or two quotes, and don't have to be competitively bid.
And to that, we're actually having, that will be on our next agenda, on May 6th, is the new updated purchasing formulas that we're going to be using.
So Mr. Johnson told us that anything and everything to do with water, the phone calls, the billing, the collecting of money, is calculated into this, right? So when I read the charter, so just made aware of this the other night, says it shall be the duty of the city treasurer to collect all water rates that may be or shall hereafter become due to said city, for the use of the city water under such regulations and ordinances as shall be prescribed by the city council, but no compensation shall be allowed by said treasurer for the performance of this duty. So what is the question? Why is, why is a percentage of his salary in the water and sewer when the charter says you can't?
My answer to that is if we're doing work for water and sewer...
Can I help?
Go ahead, help me.
So I think, you know, you're talking about the treasurer, but remember, there's a treasurer clerk position too, and the salaries are not distinct here, so sometimes when, the way it's written, it's like treasurer slash clerk? Go ahead.
The clerk defines, the clerk has records.
No, I understand, but I was just saying...
Treasurer's money.
Right, correct, so I'm just saying, sometimes, right now, we are, our treasurer and clerk are one and the same.
Right.
So it should just watch that as opposed to how is the treasurer's salary being defined, and how is the clerk's salary being defined, because that was one of the questions I had off when I first came on, so it was kind of clumped together. So what was going on right now is the percentages, and please jump in if I'm misspeaking here, that the percentages that they were using, say it was under 30%, say for your particular office, I believe, and it could have been 40, 50, 60%, but it was a rule of thumb that they pretty much, that you were using, and based upon discussions, you know, with the auditors when we first started, most probably the treasurer's office is under where other areas may be over, so that's what we're testing on the, that's what we're testing on the annual, you know, actual random looks right now. So, so I don't want it to look like it's okay, just the treasurer's salary, you can't do that, because that's, I want, we need to speak to that legally, to our council. Who's here?
Okay, it doesn't...
He's actually here.
Yeah, well, it doesn't answer my question.
Okay, so can you rephrase your questions, because I really want your question answered.
Yeah, here you go. More importantly, the last part, it says shall not be compensated, I'm just being cautious.
No, that's understandable. So I have our city council on, I just want to make sure he can hear and we can communicate with him online. Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith, are you here?
Yeah, he is out here, sorry.
Hello, thank you. So I don't know if you actually heard Ms. Councilman Curtis's question, and he was referring to the charter under 7-14 under the city treasurer?
Yeah.
A specific line where it says it shall be the duty of the city treasurer to collect all water rates that may be or shall hereafter become due to said city, excuse me, pardon me, for the use of the city water under such regulations and ordinances as shall be prescribed by the city council, but no compensation shall be allowed said treasurer for the performance of this duty. So historically, percentages were coming out of the treasurer's department, and what the council member is asking was, can you please justify or explain that? And if need be, we can go into executive session for the, ready legal advice, but I just, it's a general question right now, and it's important that it be answered.
Yeah, I actually just read that provision as Councilman Curtis was reading it, so I'm just learning this provision, so I'm not in the best position to answer that question off the cuff, but it's definitely something that we can look into and should look at, and we're going to get back to council with an opinion and advice on.
Okay, thank you. Does that help a little? Keep going.
No, that was it. No other questions? I missed that one. I have a question on a different topic.
Sure.
Underwater and sewer.
Underwater and sewer. So I'm looking at the long-range capital improvement program, and my apologies, because I'm very early on in learning my way through this budget in general, but can you talk a little bit, Jonathan, about the, like, where does that money, the average of, what is it, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, roughly, are we, are we putting money aside each year to cover that? Is it just what we expect that we're going to spend out of our budget each year to, as a part, portion of our budget on capital improvement? Is there some portion of what we're expecting from grant income? Do you know the answers to those questions? Because I'm, I sure...
So I can do my best, again, learning, I'm still new, and I guess I would, so typically my experience is that a municipality would budget a certain amount in a line item for a reserve or a capital fund.
To put aside?
To put aside.
For those moments when we need...
For those, for these moments. Now, I'm going to look to Jim and Tom, and I don't know if that's what we're doing, or, you know, if Linda wants to ask them, but I don't know exactly what we're doing here. Again, I know previously it was a line item, you know, you put $200,000 a year for the capital fund, and you're, so you're building that up, and then as you spend that money, it just goes down, and you look at it every five years to make sure...
That's exactly why I'm asking.
That you have enough money to cover these projects.
Do you, do you want...
I'm just wondering if somebody can tell us what...
So we do have sinking funds, we're going to put money into every year to build up funds to do with these certain projects, the water tower is a good example, we've put money into water tower fund for years, that's a good example of that.
So is that where this list of items for the long-range capital improvement plan would be funded from?
Tom can answer that, I'll try to answer it, but that's basically a wish list, it may or may not happen.
Right.
So if he knows that a year ahead of time he's going to, what project needs to be done, okay, we'll establish a fund, put money in it, or he'll just budget for that year to do the project, small project. But there are sinking funds in existence.
But not one called long-range capital improvement? That where we, where we put that money aside to draw on for projects like this? I'm really asking.
Not a general fund, I mean, there's sinking funds for specific purposes, but there's no fund for, not general fund for any...
Sure, go right ahead.
So it sounds like at next town meeting, you need to establish a reserve fund to do this. What I'm hearing is that we're not, we don't have a reserve fund for capital projects?
No, we don't have one fund, we have several funds that we put money into, set aside.
For capital infrastructure?
Yeah, like for example, a water tower fund, we've put money into a water tower fund for years.
What are the other ones? May I address them?
Please.
Okay, you know what the other ones are?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, so we can pull those and identify them.
I mean, we certainly can do a reserve fund for, just a general catch-all fund for any and all projects, but we don't have that.
Okay.
Keep going.
I'd just, I'd be interested in hearing from Tom. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, when I've worked with organizations in the past that deal with long-range capital, we've done it one of two ways, and it seems like either one would be legitimate. Either we've got this wish list, and, or we, or put another way, it's not a wish list so much as a, we know this is going to need to be addressed at some point, right, and you're sinking that, you're putting that $200,000 aside every year, so that when it hits, it's not hitting you out of your operating budget, right? Or you simply say, we've got an expectation that every year we're going to hit, get hit with about this much money, we're just going to budget that much money, so I'm just trying to figure out how it works here.
Okay, so, no, there's not open discussion right now. Ms... Mr. Burnier, could you address this, or do you have the answers?
Yeah, Rick, what page are you actually looking at?
I'm looking at this thing that we were given just as I came in this evening, it's called Long Range Capital Improvement Program, which looks like a totally legitimate list of things that we need to address.
Do you have that?
I actually printed it off for Jonathan today, so we update that every year, it's a five-year plan. Every year when we do our budget, those are the numbers I use. So under road construction or paving, if you look under our general fund capital items, you'll see that number there. Same with equipment. So if you're looking at the sewer and water, so I incorporate sewer and water in there too, because a lot of our road construction and paving align with sewer and water projects. So if I'm doing second in Eastern Avenue, I'm going to have paving money in there because I'm going to rebuild the road when I do the sewer system. And that money is budgeted, so any, any year during budget year, when I'm asking for $300,000 in paving, you can look at that list and it'll, it'll align.
Got it.
Jim's talking sinking fund monies, which is more specialty, a little bit more specialty projects.
Right.
Where, you know, we may put a certain amount of money in there for a project that we're looking three, four, or five years out or something.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember? Any further questions? So at this point, I'm going to go to the treasurer and ask, is there a specific motion you'd like to have made at this point in time?
Well, I think a motion needs to, one for the sewer, one for the water separately, and a motion to increase the sewer rate by 26% over, yeah, water by six, six or eight dollars.
This one's a six. Yeah, this 26 for, here we go, 26 for flat rate sewer, eight for metered sewer, and then six percent for water, both fixed and metered.
Okay, so the treasurer's asking for those motions to be made.
Some moves?
I have motion, and a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Hopkins, do you want to speak?
Yeah, just was going to explain, I propose your call.
Great, would you mind standing up and welcome back?
Only temporarily. Jennifer Hopkins, citizen of Newport. I served on the Charter Review Committee, I served on an earlier one. During that time, we had clerk treasurer, the clerk treasurer got the fees, and it was a change from going from the fee structure, that he got a fee every time he did something, to become a salaried employee, and that is where the conflict's from. The charter was never revised in that section, the charter revisions were never done, we piecemealed various things. But Charlie Blake would have been the first clerk treasurer who went from basically collecting the fees to being a paid employee, and so you have the conflict in there, which you're going to have at certain spots in the charter, because of the piecemeal change that's transpired. So I think that answers it, you know, he can collect them because he is now basically a city employee, does not get his fees. So that's... So that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
Jennifer Bierling, Newport, Vermont. The, I just want to go through a list of things I was taking notes on when you guys were talking. So the voters don't approve the water and sewer budgets. You guys are the ones that approve those budgets as the water commissioners. And I just think that that's important, because it's been one of the contentions of the residents, is that we don't have any type of, like, veto power over the water and sewer budgets. It's all in your hands. And as we've been in here beating the water and sewer drum for years, you know, when it falls on deaf ears, it's frustrating, because we don't have any, any means of controlling it. So we don't vote on, on those budgets. The capital funds versus the sinking funds, those are controlled by statute. So if you go to the Vermont statutes in the municipal section and look under your water and sewer, it will lay it all out as to what's allowed, what's not allowed, what the maximum percentage is. My recollection, I'm doing this from recollection, Mr. Chase, but is that you have to have a specified reason to establish the fund, and then there's maximums that you can pull into that fund. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring up is that, I think, I don't know who did, who did the calculations on the, on the rates here?
That's not important. Just...
Okay. So whoever did it, I think there might have been a mathematical error. In the beginning section of both the water rates and the sewer rates, it talks about a minimum connection rate, which is usage equivalent to 13,500 gallons. But if you do the math, the numbers don't line up. So under the vacant land with just the connection, if you were to do, that's where I think this rate is getting pulled from. I don't know for sure, but the number is the same, so I'm making that assumption. If you were to do 13,500 gallons at that fixed rate for water, it should be 4509 rather than the 4452. And then under the sewer, if you were to do that calculation, it should be $76.55, and it's listed here as $89.46. So I just think there was an error somewhere, perhaps in the spreadsheet or something in the sheet, I don't know, but it doesn't line up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So just, you know, we did, the council did run on the water and sewer budget, and we do have our city lawyers who do the actual interpretation of statutes for...
Who's there?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and further comments by the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
May I have a copy of the motion? May I have a roll call?
You may.
And may, may I? Go ahead. May I have a roll call?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will, you have a copy of the motion.
Or do you have, you have a motion? I just need to get the numbers.
Oh, good.
Chris, I'll get them to you.
Did Chris sign it?
Ellie signed it first.
What?
Ellie signed it first.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to send it back this way.
This is for just the first of three?
This is for the water and sewer, this is for...
We did them all at once? Madam Mayor, can he just have this?
Um, yeah, just write draft on it.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's the, where would the, may I?
Yes.
Where's the amount? I don't know.
The city manager's going to...
Oh, I don't know, maybe the glasses on. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for the comments on that. Thank you. Thank you for your input on that. The next item on the agenda is interview of potential candidates for fire chief, potential executive session, one of the S.A. section 31383. May I have a motion to enter executive session to interview candidates and discuss candidates for the position of a fire chief, and to invite any candidates as appropriate individually in, as well as the city manager into executive session, to invite our fire, interim fire chief into executive session, and to invite our city attorney as well, and to discuss, if appropriate, any council-approved contracts pursuant to one of the S.A. section 31383 that pertain to the fire chief.
Some move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and we are in executive session. Executive session, and no action is taken.
I promise you that.
You did?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll give you one, so you don't feel left out.
We're out of executive session, and no comment is taken. Hi, Dan.
Aye, and I'll give you one, so you don't feel left out. You're good.
My own chikat.
Secret.
Like, obviously.
If you're good, you can say it at the end of it. If you behave, get too wild with that gavel.
Yeah, let me just press this each other one minute. Oh, that's it, I'm not, I'm really not going off until I... Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of, pardon me, of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings, so that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I hereby request the public's cooperation and compliance with the public's guidelines when participating in a meeting. Thank you. When your name is called, would you please speak into the microphone, announce your residence and/or affiliation? I have Mr. Bierling, but there's no topic. Did you want to identify the topic?
Yeah, I'll just respond to the water and sewer rendition.
Okay.
Jennifer Bierling, resident Newport, Vermont. So I was really happy tonight to hear the discussion about water and sewer rates and hear that depreciation was not being counted in the calculation of those rates. I have been screaming from the mountaintops for quite some time that the statutes do not allow depreciation in the calculation, and this is the very first time that it's been acknowledged and handled appropriately. So I, I just say thank you. And I feel vindicated, vindicated to a certain extent, which is also a nice feeling to have. So thanks for doing it the way it's supposed to be done. Thanks.
Thank you for the comment. Next item is, pardon me, a new business. President Fushon?
Just another reminder, clean up day in May 4th. Bags are up here. Get up there and clean up our community. That's all.
Next one, Sharpe.
The email I sent you, I had received a email from Mr. Ross indicating that a constable in the select board was incompatible position. He also quoted the title, Title 17... I forget the exact subject.
So we aren't going, addressing that and doing, I'm definitely, I got your email, and it's going to be addressed. Okay. Councilman Curtis?
No, thank you.
Councilman, Mr. Chase?
No.
Treasurer?
Yeah, I got a couple quick things to go on.
Oh, of course.
I've got a liquor license renewal for the American Legion. This is a renewal, a lot of new ones, so if you wouldn't mind doing that, otherwise I'm going to have to call and tell them they're going to lose a week's worth of income for state to depend on.
So...
I'd like to have a motion to approve that one.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the renewal of the liquor license?
Some move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
So, if I may, the second one goes along with that. There's going to be almost three weeks between council meetings, other than this one. And we're lucky there's only one of these coming. I suspect there's more of those out there. I understand it's their responsibility to apply for liquor control, but sometimes things get delayed. Years ago, it used to all come to me, all the applications I'd send them out. It doesn't happen anymore. They have to deal directly with liquor control. So I'd like to have the council consider authorizing myself and Jonathan, or myself and the chief, or two to three, to approve the renewal application, not new ones. That, that's a different story, but renewal, the ones that have been renewing these for years.
So can, can we discuss this, so we can get that on, or do you, on the next agenda item? Because we just need to do some research.
If I didn't think there were any more out there, I wouldn't have a problem delaying it till the next meeting. But I got a feeling there's more, there's more out there that people just realize, hey, I didn't apply for that thing.
Yeah, my concern is that we do need to just do some research on this. And the next meeting's Monday, right?
Next week.
The following week from Monday.
Yeah.
But I mean, I know the council members wouldn't mind having a special meeting.
Well...
Except one.
It's just up for consideration, because I know there's going to be a couple more out there at least.
Yeah, I would just be more comfortable if we discussed this with our, had our attorney look into this, and what it is with the control board, and how it has to work.
Yeah.
So I, that's my opinion, so I would think we would need to look at this.
I honestly don't know much about controls.
That's what I mean.
I, I do wonder, would it be, would we be able to make it like a temporary, temporarily for the next two weeks, sign those renewals, so nobody misses that one income?
We actually had something similar to this before. The, the city manager and the mayor would sign off on, I think it was renewals and the warrants.
Their council did approve years ago that, that I could sign off on the catering permits, if people already had licenses to cater those things. That's in place, but my concern is these people, particularly a buyer, they seem to invest their whole income and have to miss income for a week. That'd be a big hit to some people.
So, no, I hear you. So council member, you said that, do you remember what it was that was signed off by the mayor and the city manager, or if it was the mayor and the treasurer? Just, I just want to make sure that it stays on the council level where we can...
I believe it was renewals. Mr. Ross, am I correct in that?
Is it...
I believe you are.
Yeah, I asked him, because he was on board.
No, that's okay. I just need to, if you, just want to recognize them appropriately. Do you know?
Yeah, it's true.
I totally believe it's true.
Well, before we get started, let me say, because when he was on the board, that before my time.
Oh, okay. Definitely clarified, okay.
We were on the board together, 1999, okay?
So, how did it work?
We just authorized it so that, if you have somebody has a business downtown, and they have to shut half of it down, or they can't serve drinks, or...
Right.
Or they can't sell a six-pack of beer, and it takes three or four weeks for us to finalize it. It is a, we have small businesses, so we don't have, it can be a real hit on their profits for, over time. And I think, because it's renewal, you know, a new one, you have to look at. You have to understand, okay, it's a new business, how's this working and stuff. But the old ones, most of the businesses that come in town, they've been here for years. You know, it isn't like it's the first time or the second renewal, or third renewal. They're, they're established businesses. And if we have an established business that's been doing this, and they make the mistake of forgetting to fill out some paperwork, we should be willing to help them.
No, sure, of course. I just wanted, I, once the council member said it was done before, I just wanted to see how it was done. So I'm open to the president's suggestion of having a motion temporarily to have, I just, the treasurer, and I just think it needs to, or the treasurer, the city manager, I don't care who it is, as long as it's for the temporary period, so that we can...
Counselor.
Have the council, our counselor, look at it.
Yeah, and this, this only happens once a year. I mean, they renew every year, so it won't happen again until next week.
Right, but I just want to make sure...
So if you do a temporary one for two weeks, it's going to cover it till next year. You've got plenty of time to...
Okay, so we'll do it for a week and a half. Okay, are you good, counsel, with that?
Yeah.
Are you?
Sure.
You're good? So do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I make a motion to, until May 6th, I'm giving the council time to advise us, to give the signing power to city clerk treasurer and city manager for renewal of licenses, liquor licenses. Does it need to be liquor licenses, under licenses, just liquor licenses at this point?
Well, yeah, it's liquor, there's a first class, a third class, a second class, and a tobacco thing. It's all one another.
But it's all under that same...
All of that.
You got it.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments, or you're good? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
I thank you, and the local businesses thank you.
Finally, somebody's thanked me. Okay, city manager, do you have anything?
The only thing, just a comment on Chris's comment about green-up day. So there are bags here outside of the recreation department. We will be putting a dumpster in Gardner Park, as well as, if folks can't get to Gardner Park, to leave them on the side of the road, and our public's works crew will come get them afterwards.
I'm going to jump on that, too. Just be careful to see any sharps on the ground.
Yes.
Notify...
Yep.
Rather than pick it up.
Yep.
Be safe.
Good, thank you, and thank you to our public works department. Okay, next is old business. Excuse me, I apologize. Councilman, President Fushon?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Sharbina? Councilmember Curtis?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Mr. Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson? City manager?
Thank you.
Okay, ready, you're on for the race. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the special meeting at 6:52 P.M.?
I'm going to have that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion and the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.